We have six of our seven council members here. I think Councilmember Nelson is stuck in traffic. I'm sure he'll get here just as soon as he can. We had four people call ahead to register. Mr. Ed Deppi, Mr. Steve Clark, Sally Ness, and Evelyn Jacobson. So, Ed, Evelyn, Sally, and Steve would be the only one we're missing. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So what we're going to do is we'll go down, we'll skip over Steve, leave him time at the end. Because of the time constraints, we're going to give everybody seven minutes, and we'll work through, we'll talk as much as we can, and we'll get as far as we can. So why don't we start with Ed? Come on up. Wait, why don't you come up to the table here so we can get you on the microphone as well, please. Sign in.
Some of you probably know I had a bike accident a month ago.
I heard that. I'm sorry to hear that.
I was bringing it down in County Medical Center, and I'm okay, sort of, now.
Sorry to hear that.
Backing my bike as soon as possible, but.
All right. Well, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have made a statement up here. I guess why the city of Bloomington should purchase all gas and a couple of electric vehicles, otherwise known as EVs, and not purchase hybrid vehicles. Okay. I'm a resident of Bloomington. I'm at Deppi. Been here most of my life, or almost all my life. I attended secondary and primary schools here and raised my family here in Bloomington. And I'm an engineer, and I'm also certified, if you know what that means, from years ago. And a member of Minnesota State EV Organization. I'm an EV owner myself. I've been driving my EV for almost, for a little over a year. Pardon my slurring here, because I still have headaches from that bike accident.
Not a problem.
And I've saved thousands of dollars in gasoline, and I don't even know how much the maintenance costs because of my 12 months plus, over 12 months of EV driving. My costs for the last 12 months, I analyzed, were approximately $131 for electricity for 16,000 miles of driving, which is quite a bit of savings. All right. And I don't even know what maintenance, because EVs really have no maintenance of tires and wheel bearings and brakes and, you know, otherwise. It's just basically a battery-powered vehicle with a washing machine, motor, on-offs, which that's all really is. So it's pretty simple. Apparently, the police department here has ordered eight new police cars from the state contract, four gasoline-powered and four hybrid gasoline cars. And I'm here to ask the city to reconsider the purchase. I think for reasons I'm about to explain, having an EV is both the city's and taxpayers' best interest, I guess. Here we go. I spoke with Mr. Jeff Olefsky, Deputy Chief, Edina Police Department. He's the head of their motor vehicle fleet program for the Edina Police Department, and he said they have several gasoline hybrid vehicles working for the Edina PD. Jeff stated the hybrids save little or no money in gasoline, and really weren't worth the extra money paid for the vehicles versus just regular gasoline. And Edina has bought a Ford Mustang Mach-E EV, and is waiting for the vehicle to be retrofitted right now with their radio things and racks and, you know, pushbars. And I also spoke to Sergeant Scott Middlestead, head of the motor vehicle program. I'm sure where they have a Tesla over there in Eden Prairie.
Mm-hmm.
All right. They, this is what Scott said. Sergeant Eric LeBlanc, by the way, is head of the department Motor Vehicle Division now. And anyway, I talked to Scott a few months ago. Eden Prairie Police has one Tesla and has had an operation for over a year now. They also got two Ford Lightning vehicles that are under order, and they also have a Mach-E also, a Ford Mach-E. They're going to replace their animal patrol vehicle and their CSO vehicle, or Community Service Officer vehicle, with those pickup trucks. So they have, they also, let's see, they're also waiting for their Mach-E to get retrofitted right now, too. So they're in possession of it. He commented, "The Tesla is treated like any other squad car, has no problem during a 12-hour shift in winter or summer." And I mentioned winter because EVs have a limited, or reduced range in extreme cold, you know, just like gasoline vehicles do a little bit less. And I found that out with my EV, a little bit less. He, they're getting a couple of Level 3 DC fast chargers. I don't know what they cost, but he said that they can recharge their EVs 30 minutes or less of 85% of their new charge. Since the average squad car's driven less than 100 miles, it's no problem during a shift. All right. And currently, they have a couple of Level 2 chargers right now, and it takes the better part of six hours to charge a Tesla when it's low. So that's just like you have out here in the parking lot, which I just took with free power with my little Jeep right now. So figured I might as well use some free power.
I was running late, so I didn't park next to him.
Between meetings.
I also spoke to the motor pool officer at both New York City PD and LAPD. It was next to impossible to get through to them because they're big departments. But between the two big cities, they have got several hundred EVs in operation of different sorts. And they've got 184 Teslas, one of them, and 190 Ford Mach-Es in order. So, and LA's got a bunch of little BMW EVs, just like mine. Anyway, why don't I mention the Ford Mustang Mach-E? Because it's approved for police work in the grueling Michigan State Police Test in September 2021. That's a, it tests several vehicles, I guess, throughout the year, and Mach-E was the one that they approved. And I think they also approved the Tesla, but the Tesla is quite a bit more expensive. So, and the Mach-E is more coming of age, and it's, it's made in Detroit, I guess, or assembled in Detroit, or something like that. Many police departments rely on Michigan State Police's testing every year. All right. The Mach-E has a general summer range of over 300 miles per charge, a winter range of below, and below zero temps of about 240 miles, considering Bloomington will drive about 60, 80 miles per shift. This is of no consequence.
Ed, can I interrupt you? And I appreciate the advocacy and the information.
Yep.
And I know we have, we have somebody here who can talk about the purchase that went on, why we decided on the, I mean, do you want?
Yeah, yeah. No, basically, that's.
Because we're bumping up here, and by the time we get started here, we're about a minute and a half before we gotta wrap it up. So did you want to hear it all, or did you?
Sure. No, I just have one little last more sentence, one little more sentence here. The average gasoline car's 18,000 moving parts, and the average EV is 500 moving parts. So the maintenance is for themselves, but that's it. That's.
Appreciate it. I know we, is that, yeah, Carl, why don't you come on up here a little bit. Just very quickly, I know that there's a lot of thought that goes into the fleet purchases that take place here in the city, and I'm sure it went into the police vehicles as well. If you could just quickly kind of summarize what the thinking was behind the hybrids.
So kind of the way we go about vehicle replacements is that we work with departments closely. The first criteria is that it meets their kind of functional needs. And so in the police department, we look for pursuit-rated vehicles. So there's only a limited number of vehicles that are, that are pursuit-rated, that they would find acceptable. And so from those, then we try to find ones that fit the equipment that the police department has and that can meet their, their, their service needs. We tend to have, we only have 16 police vehicles, I believe, patrol vehicles. We run them 24/7. So with electric vehicles, when they become available, that meet their needs, we are talking about having to kind of change, perhaps purchase additional vehicles, so we can have time within their cycle to charge.
Okay.
Currently, we don't have that luxury. And that's why the hybrid vehicles was a good option for us, and that you don't have to have time to charge. The other big problem is, or challenge, is that they have rather a large computer equipment. And in, like the Ford vehicle, they looked very carefully at that. You basically had to take the passenger seat out of service to fit all the equipment in.
Okay.
So they did not find that acceptable.
Got it.
We are super excited about EV vehicles, and I can honestly say that I think that we're probably on the front end of that. Our fleet person, Michael Keim, is a longtime EV owner and is constantly looking for ways for us to implement that. So it's not a reluctance on our part to do it.
Sure. All right. Ed, I think we, I appreciate your input.
Yep.
Appreciate what you brought forward. I think, just from, from what I understand, and from where we are in the budget cycle and so on, and where we are in the purchase cycle, I think we're well on our way to purchasing these hybrids. But I know as we move forward that EVs will certainly be at top of mind, whether it's police vehicles or other vehicles. And Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Very quickly here, very quickly here.
Very quickly. We recently approved the conversion of most of our fleet to EV vehicles, correctly, over the course of a number of years. So not just police is that, am I recalling that correctly? And were the police vehicles EV or plug-in hybrid?
I think they are, they're a regular hybrid. I don't.
Regular hybrid, not plug-in.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
For that information. But we are trying to move the fleet, and we approved that to EV, and that includes, you know, probably most vehicles other than fire.
Have you done for real yet?
Yeah.
Well, currently, we've got to move on here.
Really only passenger vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we have to move on. Just making sure we get everybody a chance, but appreciate your input on all of this. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Here.
Oh, you can have these, yes.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Steve Clark did not arrive here, I don't believe. You're not Steve, are you? Okay. Sally, why don't you come on up if you could, please?
To save time, I'm just going to read my questions, and then if you could get back to me.
Okay.
And then the other questions I asked, too. I'm looking for yes or no questions. And so I gave her everything, and so I'm just going to read today. And, okay, at the end of the last meeting, the city manager stated, rough transcription, Sally said that my response is inaccurate. My response isn't inaccurate because what I said in here is that our staff and community development, their recollection was that the information that you're claiming was misrepresented wasn't material to the city's decision. That's their recollection, so it's not possible for me to say something inaccurate when I'm relying on staff's recollection of what wasn't material. The city manager's email dated May 7, 2022 states, "In talking with community development staff, the recollection was that the information alleged to have been misrepresentation was not material to the city's action decision at the time. Two questions about accuracy and one about what is considered material to a conditional use permit. Is proposing a use from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and specifically Ramadan, from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM, when the use is after 10:00 PM, an alleged misrepresentation or a misrepresentation? Second question. Is it inaccurate for the city manager's email to omit the development application that Hyder signed, and the minutes that identified Hyder Aziz as applicant, and the amended and restated site development agreement that Hyder signed, and instead provide a document that was superseded by the amended and restated site development agreement that Hyder signed? And then last question, is, in a conditional use permit, are the hours material?" So if those questions could be, you didn't save time, but if you guys want to talk.
I just have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Please.
My understanding from the latest transaction, like, we all got copied on the note that got sent to you this morning. The, from what I understand, given that city code does not place hour limits on places of assembly, and that federal law provides protections for places of assembly for religious purposes against such types of regulations, your question's kind of moot.
No, you.
See what I'm saying? So it can't be an alleged violation of a conditional use permit if the federal regulation supersedes that. It just can't, Sally.
It's not mute because you have to come and tell how you plan to use it. Because then, when you tell, like, for instance, if they had accurately stated, "We're going to use it through the night."
They don't have to do that for.
The city would have done, but the city would have done at that time, they would have said, "We need to know how that will affect the neighborhood and how we can work."
I get your point. I don't mean to, I don't mean to say that I don't get your point.
Because they didn't, there were no lights, and they didn't have the proper lighting. They had been using the park parking lot that is closed, had no lighting. The traffic, there was no concern about the beam, the light pollution to the people who live on Park Avenue. There was no concern about the number of traffic. There was no police provided in the middle of the night. There was nothing considered. So they legally have to say how they plan to use it, and then the city says, "How does that affect us?" And if I'm wrong, go ahead, send me the documents to show that.
I'm just saying, federal law, religious assembly, federal law supersedes that thing. I don't know what you want us to do about it.
Religion doesn't, religion doesn't supersede city code. They have to follow the rules.
Then maybe, maybe.
And that's.
Those comments that were sent to you, you'd say otherwise.
But anyways, still.
She has the, the proper documentation.
Regardless, I'm still looking for answers to my questions, and that's how we move forward, is, you know, yes or no, yes or no, to these specific questions, and that's how I'd like to move forward. They, you know, I mean, yes or no, is, in a, is permit, are the hours material?
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm, I'm still, and I hate to sound like a broken record on this. You have come forward now, basically, for as long as I've been on the council raising issues and looking for information. It's still not clear to me. So we give you the information, and it seems to me, for the most part, you aren't necessarily satisfied when we do. And so let me.
No, I gotta, I gotta jump in there.
Sally, no.
You guys were.
Let me finish, please.
You had, last time, the last meeting.
Sally, I'm sorry.
The city manager provided an accurate document, one that's superseded by another.
Okay.
And I'm supposed to go, "Okay, that's a good response."
And if you finish, you would have heard me say, "That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm suggesting you do." What I am suggesting is that you communicate, I don't, for whatever reason, every time you communicate with us, there, something's not lining up. You're either not getting the information you're looking for, or where, or.
Have you seen yes or no answers to my questions?
Sally, please let me finish.
Have you seen yes or no answers to my questions?
Sally, we're not going to get anywhere if you're not going to let me finish. I need to finish. Well, the point that I'm making here, the point that I'm trying to make is something is not lining up. So either, you either, we're not understanding the request you're making, or we are, and you are not, for whatever reason, the information we're giving you is not acceptable. And let.
Yes or no, simple yes or no questions.
Okay. Nope, I'm done. If you're not going to let, no, if you're not going to let me finish, Sally, we're not going to move forward.
Does any of you, are you, any of you concerned that none of these questions were answered? Yes or no?
The questions were answered. Sometimes, sometimes there is nuance. There is, there's, there's putting reference around answers. So it's not possible, perhaps, to have a yes or no answer.
Okay, please answer as many yes and nos that you.
Now, that, that's a different question, because yes, then you acknowledge that, yes, there might be nuance.
I didn't get anything in writing except for.
What is the value of having it in writing, as opposed to us all being right here telling you what we're trying to tell you?
Oh, so then.
Honestly, I'm curious.
I'm trying to.
In writing.
To someone else, then it's, she did it inaccurately, she misrepresented, she misunderstood. If I have it in writing, then I can relay it to other.
To whom are you speaking? I mean, this grievance seems to be with the council. So who else, besides, I mean, obviously, your friends and neighbors, which is fine, but, I mean, to whom else can this go? Like, who are you, are you trying to go somewhere else with this?
I'm trying to get accurate information to make corrections, to move forward accurately. Again, to have stated that Hyder Aziz was a representative, and then to have an email come with a document that was superseded by another.
And how would that help?
That shouldn't have happened.
Hold on, hold on. Let's let her finish, and let's get, let's get to Sean also.
Once the answers, once the answers are received, then move forward, then I'll figure.
To move forward to what end? You keep saying move forward, move forward to what?
To accuracy. That, these things shouldn't be.
You can't change the past, though.
All right.
But we can change the future, recognize.
Time limit, and I just, and I see, Steve Clark, Steve Clark?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we've got two more folks we have to go yet. So, thank you. Thank you, Sally. You're out of breath.
Well, I ran up the stairs, and I didn't expect it to take me 35 minutes to get from growth music on Excellent and 494 to here. Please have a seat. Have a seat. Your breath, we can go, we can, we can have one more speaker before you if you need. Why don't we do that? Let me catch my breath and assemble my notes and stuff like that. That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Another trip up and down the stairs. Just great.
Hello.
I thought you were telling him to go running up and down the stairs again.
Oh, I'm Evelyn Jacobson, 1706 West 89th Street. And I did present to you at a city council meeting a few years back when it looked a little different about RVs. I also had spoken with the planning commission when they were going through the last iteration of the changes to the RV ordinance. I have an RV that's 43 feet long. That is perfectly legal to use in Minnesota and almost every state. I think New Jersey limits some less than that. But it's perfectly legal to use. Unfortunately, in Bloomington, 40 feet is the limit that you'll define as an RV. It's illegal for me to have my own RV at my property to be able to get it cleaned up, to cool it off the refrigerators, and put food in there, et cetera, or to clean it up when I get back from a trip before I put it back into storage. I'd like to have the ordinance extended from 40 to 45 feet. When I was speaking with the city, the planning commission, the commissioners basically agreed to that, but because of the format of the meeting, when they were going through the motion, as a public person, I could not remind them, "Don't forget the 45 foot." They completely forgot it. They excused everybody because that was a long meeting and running late. On my way out, I stopped, mentioned it to the microphone. I don't know if this is proper, but remember, you were going to extend it to 45 feet? Three of the commissioners went like this at that time. But it was done, and they couldn't move it on. When it was brought to the city council, I'd made those same comments, and nothing was done at that point. I'd like to have the council reevaluate that to make it legal, so I don't have to worry about police stopping by or a letter coming in the mail when I've had my RV at my property for more than six hours, so I can make use of it. That's, that's basically it. If anybody has any questions, I'm more than.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Just a quick question for staff. Can we review the planning commission thing and just see, and maybe this can be part of miscellaneous ordinance update, if that was something that planning commission seemed to want to.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson actually shared this with Glenn Markinger, our planning manager, and Glenn's back there, if you want to hear from Glenn a little bit here, too.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Glenn, come on up.
Any street legal, any street.
Let's bring back RV discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I will, I will tell you. I mean, we, we talked RVs for three years, for the better part of three years. I can't, I can, I won't speak for everyone. My guess is, on the planning commission and the city council, there's not a lot of appetite to reopen this and start to quibble over 40 or 45 or 50 feet. I don't know that there is. But, just to let you know, and I, and I understand if there was some, if it was an oversight on behalf of the, on the part of the planning commission, maybe we can consider it. But Glenn, your recollection or thoughts, or?
Yeah. So, Mayor and council members, I can certainly review the video if you'd like. My recollection is I don't remember that specific issue. I think the 40 limit was discussed at planning commission and council. For sure, in terms of storage, whether or not those groups got into the loading-unloading situation, I'm not sure. So there are limits on storage, and then there are limits on loading-unloading. 72 hours per seven days. So if you like, we can review that, or, or you can make the change if you want us to bring forward an ordinance as well.
Sounds really easy to me personally.
I would agree with the mayor. I don't want to get into lengthy discussion. I think it would be good to just take a look at what was talked about there and make sure what we actually did was consistent with, with that conversation. If something got missed at the end of it, then it's, you know, finding an easy way to correct it, but.
If that planning commission meeting was recorded, I would very love to see the recording, including the aftertime, when most of the folks were filing out, and I made that comment.
Okay.
Because I, I was there, this is obviously very important to me. And I, like I said, I saw at least three commissioners put their hand in their head, their head in their hands when they realized that they'd missed that. And secondarily, there is no option for public comment during that period. And I understand that may be for other reasons, but it would seem like, at that time, if I could, don't forget the 45-foot change while they were discussing that, this all would have gone by. And I understand the length of time that the council and the planning commission have talked about RVs. That's why I hadn't even brought it up since then. It was just as a happenstance that I happened to chat with my council member on Friday, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Understood. And I think the, the public hearings, I know the planning commission had a public hearing on it. I know we had a dozen public hearings on this old, old topic. So if it, if you brought that up, and then if it wasn't considered or was mistaken, we'll, we'll have to, we'll rely on Glenn, and I'm sure there might be a council member who would bring it up at our policy and issues update to see if we want to revisit it. The appropriate time to bring that up is the end of our council meeting, which is coming up. So, all right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Good.
And Mr. Clark, have you, have you?
I have, I have found my breath.
Good.
So, thanks for.
To let you know, we're limiting people to seven minutes. We'll give you a couple extra minutes. We'll bump over our time limit here because we'll keep it even with everybody else. So.
Well, I very much appreciate that, and I apologize for being tardy. I forewent, I teach out of growth music, and so I gave up one of my lessons, which is, you know, neither here nor there, considering what today is, you know, being the 78th anniversary of the invasion of Normandy. And I've been reflecting a lot about that today. My, my great uncle served in the Battle of the Bulge. I have served in, as an election judge for 24, 25, 26 elections.
Thank you for doing that.
Wow. And it is my understanding that we are, and I always hear that we are, we don't have enough election judges. There's not enough people that will staff this, that really want to get up at 5 o'clock in the morning. I'm a professional musician. I don't, I go to bed at 5 o'clock in the morning. Get up at 5 o'clock. Well, I do. And I, and about, for half of those elections, I have been a head judge. So it's my job to herd cats. It's my job to make sure that all of the numbers come out exactly correct. It's my job to make certain that, that jobs are rotated, and that people that are uncomfortable with certain jobs don't have to necessarily do them, or are exposed to them long enough so that they can become more comfortable. I've also been, I've also watched this, the evolution of, you know, like, for instance, electronic poll books. And I also know that our demographic for election judges happens to be seniors. Most of these people are considerably older than me, and I am not a young man. I wish I was younger. And many of these seniors are terrified of the electronic poll books. I mean, I don't want to be, I don't want that job. I don't want that job. I want to be the greeter. I want to be the ballot judge. I want to be this judge. Okay. So when I applied to become an election judge, and have done this multiple times, here's my application. It's two pages. Current application is 29 pages, nine sections. And I printed out a whole bunch of them for you. I didn't get them all printed. You'll have to share. Okay? So first thing I found when I went onto the line, my, my virus, antivirus says, "Warning: Protective security risk" when I went onto the city of Bloomington's website, which is unfortunate. So, now, I worked in IT. I've been a project manager. I was a project manager for GMAC RFC, where we move billions of dollars through the secondary mortgage market. I understand enough about IT to be dangerous. I can't, I couldn't print out the application. So this is a series of screenshots that I had to copy the screenshot, paste it into a Word, copy the screenshot, paste it into Word, copy the screenshot, paste it into Word for 29 pages. Some of them may be overlapping. Okay. So my first point here is, is like, if we are struggling to have enough election judges, why have we taken a two-page form and turned it into 29?
So what additional information is asked in the 20?
Oh, well, let's have a look, shall we? I'm excited about this. Okay. So first one, general information. It's pretty straightforward. It's the same kind of thing that you get asked for here. You know, who are you? Where do you live? You know, all that other kind of stuff. So we go there. Okay. And then it says, okay, that's fine. Do you have a driver's license? Is a driver's license a qualification for being an election judge? It is not. So what about people, the elderly people, the seniors, that have someone else take them or use metro mobility in order to be able to get to their election judge? Right? And you have to answer that question, or you cannot go on.
And so that isn't, that wasn't part of the paper application?
No. Would you like to see, I've had, and the city clerk has a copy of this. Fortunately, they, I was able to retrieve this, thank you, this morning. HR does not have a copy of this. But we're employees, but we're not employees. So election judges are kind of considered second-class employees, because this document is not in HR. Okay. And so let's see. It tells you at the beginning of the application that this job pays this much money. And the first question, after the required question of, "Do you have a driver's license, yes or no?" is, "What is your minimum compensation requirement?" Okay. Well, I just looked at a thing that says, "This is what it pays," so now I'm being asked by HR that, you know, "What is your minimum compensation requirement?" "What type of job are you looking for?" Well, let's see. I put down the link to apply for an election judge. Seems kind of, and I was told that this process was to make it easier. So far, I'm not seeing any easier. I'm seeing it to be more difficult. And if I was 75 years old and didn't have a computer, I would be disqualified. If I didn't have internet service, I would be disqualified. I consider that exclusion, not inclusion. I consider it exclusion to the point of discrimination. Okay? You can tell that I'm, I'm passionate about this.
Yeah.
I mean, our.
So we understand, we understand your point here. Let's get into a couple of questions here, and I also want to hear from our city clerk.
And so go to the next page. What is your typing speed? How much, what is your data entry?
Understand your point, Mr. Clark. I understand your point.
From what I'm seeing, my guess would be this just got added as another position, like any position we put out there, because I'd want all this if I was going to hire an accountant full-time. But I could see why this is not relevant to this position. Is there a way we could just have a subset of the two-page?
Can we make this? Can we make this?
I'm guessing that's exactly right. So as part of an HR upgrade that we did, we added this into the, the system and it results in a not great experience for folks that are in these jobs.
This is an upgrade?
If you're hired.
From a backend HR perspective, it could be, but you're not seeing that on the front end.
I'm certainly not. I mean, all you had to do was basically take the, and, and, and there is an application for.
But let's hear from, let's hear from Christina here.
Okay.
So thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Mr. Clark, it's nice to see you again.
Good to see you again as well.
We did, we did make a change to an online application process to be consistent with the employee application process for all of our other city positions. As Mr. Clark pointed out, our election judges are city employees and that's one of the reasons we added that position to our compensation plan earlier this year, we want to be consistent. Many of the questions that Mr. Clark referenced in the application form are not required questions. And so when we sent instructions out to our election judges, we notified them, there's a lot in here that you don't need to complete, only complete the things with the red asterisk. So we don't need your work experience, we don't need your educational history, driver's license isn't required. There are some standard questions that HR does require of anybody who's applying for a job with the city and those are the questions we're asking in addition to the questions we would typically ask an election judge. What days can you work? What's your political affiliation? What precinct would you like to work in? Things that we need to know in order to accurately place them in a precinct. We've had 20, 222 applications received so far in the first three weeks of our hiring. Of those, I have met with 13 judges one-on-one to provide individual assistance for explaining the system, for providing whatever guidance they might need to ensure that their application was submitted. So about 5% of our judges have received additional assistance. And we have technology here available for them to use if they don't have access to an internet, to the internet or to a computer. We've made accommodations similar to what HR would do in any other instance where a job, like applicant calls and says that they need additional assistance with an application. We also plan at the end of this week to reach out to any judges who would usually be returning judges that we haven't seen an application from yet and just make sure that if they need additional assistance, if that's the reason they haven't applied yet, that we're providing that additional assistance for them. In the future, this will decrease the amount of entry the election judges need to do because their account will already have this information next year when they come to apply, preloaded in there. And so this first year has been a learning curve for all of us.
And does that all make sense and?
Except.
I'm here, we've got to get downstairs, so.
Here and I've answered them like for 24, 25 different elections.
And, and.
And, and so, and if I'm, if I'm 70 years old and I'm looking through this and I said, well, let me put it this way, precinct number three has roughly 1,870 some odd registered voters. I remember that from 20, 2021, give or take. At our primary, we will be lucky to see 10% of people turn up. And that's just to show up and vote. So if we are having that much of a difficulty getting people to vote, putting this type of plane or these types of things in front of, you know, election, of potential election judges, will just, and maybe you got plenty. And so if that's the case, God bless you.
I understand what you're saying, I really do. I also understand, I mean, you made the point earlier that not having the official application on file makes judges or feel like secondhand employees, well, this was an opportunity or a possibility to move them into the, the HR system.
Sure.
And, and as Christina just said, next year, it'll auto fill. So, I mean, it, it, it might be one year of pain for a long-term gain, basically is what I'm thinking, so.
Here's my, here's my application for temporary, all you had to do was scan it. There's a, there's a piece of technology called HUCR, otherwise known as optical character recognition, it's been around for a while.
Very quickly here, we got to get downstairs, gang.
Do you have paper applications for people?
No, no, I don't believe we.
Cannot print out the application, cannot.
Do you have a question as well or a comment?
Just curious about how many election judges from the past have not been able to fulfill